May the audience please rise. Please repeat the pledge allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The audience may be seated.
We'll have communications, city manager?
I have nothing tonight.
City attorney?
Nothing from the city attorney's office.
David Oka?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Brian Clay?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Bill?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Wiggins?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Chief McRee?
I'm in a break residence. Just want to make the council aware of an event the fire department's participating in this Saturday at South Town Mall is the Fourth Annual Chili Cook-Off, which is a fundraiser for burn camp. And you're West Jordan Fire Department's, the defending champions for the best chili. And we'll be back there again from 11:00 to 4:00 at South Town Mall, selling chili to raise money for the burn camps. So if you have some free time, I'd love to have you stop by. Thanks.
Chief, I have one request. Could you see me after the meeting, please? From our resident? Okay, thank you. Chief Diamond?
Thank you, mayor and council. We have, just so you are aware and just to keep you up to date, we've had our kickoff yesterday, today, and tomorrow for the new CAD and RMS system that will be a county-wide system. So that has happened. The contracts have been signed. We've had that kickoff. And we will be moving forward with that. It should take, it'll be about an 18-month process, so about March, April 2018, we should be on our new system.
Thank you. Counsel? Councilmember Rice?
Nothing at this time, mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Nichols?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Hagan?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
I have something tonight, mayor, thank you. I just want to remind people that we are going to be replacing the vandalized trees on November 5th. If you'd like to join with us at 8:00 in the morning, we'll meet over at the Veterans Memorial Park on the west side. And if you go to the website, you can sign up. Thank you, mayor.
And I had one item tonight. As everyone in the council knows, we had a RFP for a bronze sent out. And we had, I think, a few that submitted proposals. We need to, in my opinion, set up a selection committee. And I had hoped that three members of the council would be on that committee and one member of the arts council and then two members of the public, so that they could give us a recommendation. And then, of course, the council will decide on the final. So do I have any volunteers? I certainly would volunteer for one member of the council to be on that selection committee.
I'm happy. It would just be contingent on when we meet, but absolutely, I'd love to.
Who is on the arts committee now?
Well, we're gonna have to find out who would volunteer. And then two members of the public also would like to volunteer.
I'd be willing to sit on that as well.
Okay. We'll move now to citizens' comments. I have two signed up to speak tonight. David Sawyer?
Mayor, council, staff? I'm Dave Sauer. I'm the scout master of Troop 1223 at Mountain Vista United Methodist Church in West Jordan. On the 15th of October, which is a Saturday, at 1:00 PM, we're doing a flag retirement of a number of our own flags from the troop. Kim Wells from the city that you know so well, she's also given us flags from the city to retire. And it's an invite to you to please come. The flags will be properly cut apart. And we would love to have each one of you and the community to be present so that we can show honor to the flag, retire it properly. And I've already promised the chiefs over here that we're not burning the flag out of protest and we won't burn down West Jordan. You know, so we all take all the proper precautions, but we would love to have the city council present. Representative Ken Ivory and also State Senator Wayne Harper have committed, they're gonna be there since we're part of their district, they're gonna come. An invite has also gone to Representative Mia Love and her staff. And they're gonna see who they're gonna be able to send to attend there. Again, it's, I want everybody present. It's a big deal. I'm a retired vet, I'm first sergeant. And so for me to properly show the respect of the glory, I want everybody there. So more the merrier. And I'm gonna do my best not to have any riots, chief, honest. We'll do things properly. So again, Saturday the 15th at 1:00 PM, sir.
Saturday the 15th of October?
That's correct, sir.
At 1:00 PM, here?
At our church at 90th and 32 West, right at the intersection, United Methodist Church.
90th South, 200 West.
Can't miss it. It's the big field that'll be on fire from the flags. So we're good. So thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. Alexandra Ephremo?
Mayor and council, ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting? We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governance. Whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal faiths, we seek wisdom, understanding, fairness, and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in the pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Thank you. And I feel very sorry for one of our council members who did not behave correctly as a public servant and was elected to West Jordan.
Mayor, at this point, I'd like to interject and indicate, according to our own rules, the council requires that citizens help maintain the decorum of meetings by not engaging in verbal attacks against others and by being respectful during the proceedings of the meeting. I'd ask that we state on that point.
Mayor, I'm not lying. The behavior occurred and I feel sorry for that person for not having to say I'm sorry. Anyway, two weeks ago, you know, when you all were elected, you got $750 a month. And then last year, you went ahead and increased your salary to 1,500. I opposed it and I said 1,000. And here, two weeks ago, one of the members said that you wanted money for a luncheon. You wanted money. That's why you have the 1,500, is for lunches and your salary. Is that, I mean, not the salary, but for gas and lunches? I thought that's what the 1,500 was for. It's certainly not a salary. It is a stipend, as far as I understand. I was ashamed of the person that asked to be paid for the luncheon. The other thing, yesterday I went to Salt Lake, I don't have enough time, Salt Lake County Council. They had quite an extensive comment about suicide. We are fifth in the nation in Utah of suicide with youngsters and elderly people. And I'm just trying to figure out why, why? And I think one of the big things is that some of our families here, because of religious elements, say you have to be perfect. And they said there was a little boy that got chocolate milk. His dad was so mad at him, two days later he committed suicide. None of us are perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Copper Hills High School body?
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Tyson Iyer. I'm the SBO Public Relations Officer at Copper Hills this year. And I was just coming to invite you personally to our homecoming activities, which will be next week. So our homecoming game will be Friday, September 30th. And that starts at 7:00 PM. And we would just like to invite you all there and hope to see you all there. And before the game, we have tailgate party, which starts at 5:00 PM. And you're more than welcome to come to that. It'll be some fun activities there. And then the night before, we have a homecoming parade, which starts at 7:00. And we would like to invite you to that as well. And that includes the burning of the CH and the fireworks on the football field. And so we just wanted to invite you all to that. And the cross-country team for the high school normally runs the football from the city hall to Copper Hills for the football game, which is at Friday. And so we were wondering if we could possibly have a representative there to hand off the football to our cross-country team. So we were just wondering if you had someone in mind that could do that for us?
I won't be off here that early. Is there someone that could? It's a wonderful thing. I've done it before. Is there someone that could be committed to hand off the football down here at Bythe Fountain on Friday?
Anytime after 4:00 PM would work for me.
Do you plan on like 5:00 o'clock or?
Yes, I believe so, 5:00 PM, yeah, around that time. And I'll come and make sure that the cross-country team gets it all right and we get the football handed off and everything, so.
Councilmember Nichols would be here to hand it off?
Okay, sounds great. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Good luck.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Now would be the time. Seeing no one, I will close the citizens' comments and move to the consent calendar. No one has told me of any items to be pulled from the consent calendar. Councilmember Hagan?
Mayor, I move to approve consent items A through G.
A motion by councilmember Hagan and a second by councilmember Rice. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice? The vote passes five in favor.
Item 6A, public hearing item. Public hearing to receive comment with respect to the issuance of approximately $45 million sales tax revenue bonds and any potential economic impact that the project financed with the proceeds of said bonds may have on the private sector. Bill?
Tonight, we're here to have a public hearing on the proposed issuance of sale of tax revenue bonds of $45 million. This was passed in a resolution, a primary resolution, on August 24th to begin the bond process. And these are to be issued for improvements in construction of the city recreation center.
Any questions from, Bill? Thanks, Bill. I will now open the public hearing for item 6A. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on item 6A, now would be the chance. Please come forward.
Mayor and council, Alexandra Ephremo, 3735 Jud Circle. In here, it doesn't say, we're talking about $400 million, but what is that for the individual taxpayer of West Jordan? Can somebody answer that or do I have to do it later? Do I need to call the city to find out? It doesn't give us very much information. I just would like to know. $45 million is a lot and I would like to have some idea of what it is gonna cost the individual cities, citizens of West Jordan, especially property owners. You know, the thing is, I'm really not happy. I'm a single person. I have a home, okay, one person, one home. But I pay property taxes. And yet, there are people that have a home that have 16 people living in that home. They pay the same amount I do. But because I'm single and my house is paid for, I have to pay the brunt of the property taxes. And this is, I mean, I just would like to have some idea what, I love transparency. I love a lot of detail. And I like to be advised of what that might be. So could somebody, please, do I need to call the city tomorrow or can I have an answer today?
I'd be glad to answer. First of all, it's $45 million, not 400 million.
Oh, I'm sorry, 4,500, I mean, 45 million, sorry.
And it won't be on your property tax. It's from sales tax revenue is the way the bond is gonna be written. If, in fact, the bond gets written, it'll be from sales tax revenue, so it won't be an individual thing. It'll be from the revenue that's received from sales tax.
So how many years, I mean, is that?
Well, we haven't moved to that portion yet, but we're assuming 30 years.
30 years? Okay, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item 6A? Please, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I've never done this before, but I'm Matt Oldroyd. And I was just curious, why a 30-year bond? Why are we extending it out so long? My concern with that would be, you know, on a 15-year mortgage, you pay a lot less interest than a 30-year mortgage kind of thing. I'm assuming the same principle applies to bonding. I'm just curious of the thought process on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Makes the payment smaller?
In the long run, it seems smaller, but it really large.
There's a finite amount of funds that can be appropriated for this. Again, we don't have the bond, we don't have the interest rate, we don't have anything at this point. We're just approving to go to the next step with this public hearing. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing for item 6A. There is no formal action required, so. That will be the item for 6A. And item 6B is can be continued until October 12, 2016. We do need a motion to move that to October 12. Still moved? Second? I have a motion by councilmember Burton and a second by councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Rice? Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
The vote passes five in favor.
Yes, we do. And I'm trying to think how to handle this, because we need to hold a closed session tonight.
David, can, our attorney David Oka can clarify for me, but I'm thinking maybe the best is to make a motion to adjourn the council meeting?
Until after the NBA?
To go into the NBA meeting and then at the NBA meeting, make the motion to go to the closed session? Or how would you recommend it, David?
At this point, I'd make that motion to suspend this meeting, make the motion to enter into the NBA meeting, conclude the matters needed due to the public hearing, then close that, re-enter the West Jordan council meeting. Probably require motions in all three steps.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, mayor. Move to recess council meeting and convene the municipal building authority meeting.
We have a motion by councilmember Nichols? Second? And a second by councilmember Burton. We need a vote called on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. I will now call to order the municipal building authority meeting of September 21st, 2016. The first item of business is to approve the minutes of August 24th, 2016. Second? I have a motion by councilmember Rice and a second by councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice? Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes five in favor.
Item 3A. Public hearing to receive comment with respect to and the issuance of approximately $25 million of lease revenue bonds and any potential economic impact that that project financed with the proceeds of said bonds may have on the private sector. Bill?
Tonight, we're here to have a public hearing on the proposed issuance of lease revenue bonds that were passed in a primary resolution on August 24th, 2016, to begin bond process. And this is for construction of the Public Works Building.
Questions for you? I will now open the public hearing for item 3A. If you're here to speak on this item, now would be the time. Please.
Alexandra Ephremo, 3735 Jud Circle. Once again, transparency. Okay, here we are having a public hearing to receive comment on the issuance of $25 billion bond. Okay, how many years and how much to each taxpayer? I'm sorry, I'm asking for transparency. I don't think that's too much to ask. I'm sorry, I don't have a computer, so I rely on TV and the newspaper and coming here and finding out. But I would like to know, what is the potential? I mean, you're talking about for the issuance, but what is the potential possible cost to each citizen of West Jordan? And again, possibly, I'm not saying, it doesn't have to be written in stone and possibly how many years. But I would like more transparency. We have three lines, $25 million? Is that just a penny? Is it a drop in the bucket to some people? Not to me. Not to me. And I would like more transparency. You know, none of the, I don't have a doctorate degree. I don't have, I'm not a professor, so I don't know a lot of this stuff. I come here to learn and for transparency. And to me, this isn't, this isn't right. I'm hurt by not more transparency from our staff and to the citizens of West Jordan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing for item 3A. And again, no official action is required.
No.
So we will move, I need a motion to adjourn the municipal building authority meeting and convene the city council meeting. I move to adjourn, mayor. And convene? And convene back for the city council meeting. Second? I have a motion by councilmember Burton and a second by council, excuse me, board member Burton and a second by board member Nichols. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
First, I apologize. I called you councilmembers on the minute approval. Board member Burton?
Yes.
Board member Hagan?
Yes.
Chair Rolfe?
Yes.
Board member Rice? Board member Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes five in favor.
Okay, back to item eight on the city council agenda. I need a motion to move to closed session and adjourn from there. Closed session will be the discussion of character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. Strategy sessions to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation. Strategy sessions to discuss purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of a water right or a water share. Councilmember Burton? I move that we adjourn and reconvene in a closed session for the reasons stated. So we will move to the closed session and adjourn from there. That's what I meant to say, thank you. Council? Second? I have a motion by councilmember Burton, a second by councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rice? Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes five in favor.
We'll convene at five minutes in the conference room.